Change of stock in Yankee Spirits. And we have a change of license and change of ownership in Altrus Brewing. We have department head reports, water and sewer, and DPW. We have our town administrator update for action items. We have consideration and possible action on an application filed by Yankee Spirits, Inc. for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers, and change of pledge of license, stock, or inventory. Consideration and possible action on an application filed by Altrus Brewing Company, LLC for a change of manager and change of officers, directors, LLC managers. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Bradford Merkel as a three-year police officer at an hourly rate of 3628 effective February 26, 2024. We have consideration and possible action on the renewal of the existing Department of Armory easement of pipeline right-of-way located at Westfield Lake Project. Consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to sign the Pavement Management Services Agreement. We have consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to sign the contract with Edward J. Collins, Jr., Center for Public Management, in the amount of $31,500. Consideration and possible action to accept the resignation letter of Crystal Kowalski, Center Office Building Pool Receptionist. Consideration and possible action to vote to forward the proposed zoning amendments to the planning board to begin the public hearing process in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 5. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Barbara Barry, Finance Director, as parking clerk for a term to expire February 20, 2027. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Heather Blakely, DPW Director, as fence viewer for a term to expire February 20, 2025. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment for Anthony Crane, Tree Warden, as moth inspector for a term to expire February 20, 2026. In consideration and possible action for the board to sign the warrant for presidential preference primaries. We'll have old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens of forum, and then we'll adjourn. So if we could start tonight with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now, can you please have a moment of silence for all the senseless violence going Thank you. We have public service announcements, in-person early voting hours. Saturday, February 24, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday, February 26, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, February 27, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Wednesday, February 28, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thursday, February 29, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And Friday, March 1, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We will have a public hearing on the proposed Burgess Elementary School budget for the 23-24 school year. It will be held on Thursday, March 7, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. in the cafeteria at Burgess Elementary School. Now we have a public hearing. Yep, 6:35.
Will we give public announcements?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. And do we have any public announcements?
Well, first of all, I want to express the board's sympathy to the Barnacle family for the passing of Pat. She served for many years on the Tantasca School Committee, and she did a fantastic job. Also, I went to the ribbon cutting at the new business in town, The Wall, and I was tired just watching a few people hit it. So I think I'll be a spectator, but it's an awesome-looking place in there. Okay, that's all I had, except on, you mentioned the Burgess budget. Did we get a copy of it?
We got forwarded to you now.
Yeah, I thought that got forwarded to you. I don't know if we got a copy of the final or if it's just being heard, the proposed one. I'm not sure if I got a copy of the proposed one.
They didn't change much.
So, yeah, that's why I'm kind of, I know Barbara had numbers, but I don't know if she had details. I'll check.
Is that it, Mary?
Yes.
And I also want to make an announcement that the Special Events Committee is going to be hosting a mix-and-mingle at the Public House, March 30. It's a Saturday night from 7 to 11. It's a free event. You will need a ticket, so it's going to be on Evenbright. You can go on and, you know, use the code. We'll have flyers in the next week or so. But it's an opportunity for Sturbridge people to get together. It's going to be, bring your friends. We're going to see how it goes. We'll have a limited amount of tickets based upon the size of the page hall. But there'll be a DJ, free appetizers, and a cash bar. Hopefully, we'll get a good turnout. This is the first time we're trying it, and we're hoping that a lot of people come and have a good time. So it's March 30. It's a Saturday night.
And I have none. All right, so we'll open the public hearing and then vote, and you want to do discussion at the action items?
Well, the action items, we can include right in the vote.
In the vote for the public hearing, yeah.
All right, so notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Yankee Spirits for a change of stock interest at the premises currently located 376 Main Street, Sturbridge, with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen. In accordance with MASH General Act, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held Tuesday, February 20, 2024, 6:35 p.m., Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, and the notice is dated February 1, 2024.
Good evening.
Want to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name's John Dross. I'm an attorney with Fitzgerald Law, where Eastlake Meadow, and I'm here to represent Yankee Spirits. As you know, they're a pack of sore right down the street, and we filed this application just because there were several internal housekeeping items on the corporate level that we needed to finalize and get addressed. There were some retirements. The main shareholder was also a trust. The trust had terminated, so the shares went to the beneficiaries, who've already been approved as beneficiaries. So it's just internal record-keeping. We wanted to make sure that the board was aware of everything that was happening.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that's here to speak on this? Hearing, none. Do we have any discussion?
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
No, I have none. So do we have a motion to approve?
We need to close the public hearing. Public hearing, do we need to close the public hearing?
Well, you can do it either way.
Okay. Yeah, you could do it either way. You could close the public hearing and then take the vote.
Okay, let's.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor? Public hearing is now closed, and do we have a vote to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application filed by Yankee Spirits for a change of stock interest at the premises located at 376 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. as presented in the documents this evening.
Okay, we also want to add to that the other request.
Oh, okay.
Change of officers slash directors, LLC managers, and change of pledge of license, stock, or inventory.
Okay, motion as amended.
Second.
You have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
All set.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, God bless.
The publication?
All the checks.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Sorry. Got a little carried away. See, I told you.
Yeah.
What did they give you? I'm out there, I'll tell you.
Next up, we have the public hearing for Altrus Brewing. Do we have the?
Yes, I have that as well. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Altrus Brewing Company for a transfer of licenses and change of ownership interest, LLC members, LLP partners, trustees, et cetera, at the premises currently located at 559 Main Street, Unit 105 in Fistil, with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen. In accordance with MASH General Act, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 20, 24, at 6:35. The hearing is Veterans Memorial Hall in Sturbridge, and the notice is dated February 1, 2024.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Neil Phillips. I'm the attorney for the moving party here. I'm from Springfield, Massachusetts, and we're looking for a transfer of ownership and management here, and that's basically it. I don't know if you're familiar with their business, but they've been around for a little while, and they run it themselves. And they've done a good job, and they're taking over. They're buying out the owner.
Great.
Nice.
And this is a public hearing, so at this point, if anybody in the audience wants to speak on behalf? Hearing, none.
Going to keep Thursday night trivia?
Uh-oh.
All right, thank you. I just want to say I've never won, but I do like to go.
You find out what really matters when you come to these.
Keep coming, you win.
Thank you.
Good salesman.
Thank you.
Or a bribe.
And does the board have any questions for?
No.
Hearing, none. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Next, do we have a motion to approve the?
I'll make a motion to approve the application that's been filed by Altrus Brewing Company, LLC for a transfer of license and change of ownership interest, LLC members, LLP partners, trustees, et cetera, at the premises currently located at 559 Main Street, Unit 105, Fistil, Mass. with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen. In accordance with MGL Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 20, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Thank you very much, thank you. This is like a Hallmark movie. I mean, it's starting off with a pledge of allegiance and seeing all these heroes on the wall, makes me cry, I'm telling you, World War I, Civil War. You're really doing a wonderful job down here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Mary, down?
Yeah.
How did the change of manager on that one turn?
Did you do the vote on the second part?
That's another one.
That's the second one that's on Section B. We can do it then.
Yeah, it's actually.
We just voted on the change of ownership.
Just a change, yeah, we'll still have to do the second one, but that's okay, it's the same.
And a transfer of license, but that's it.
Yeah.
Right, only part of it had to be public, the other one didn't.
Department head reports, water and sewer, and DPW. Shane, how are you?
Good.
Good, good. Can you kind of give us a little rundown on how everything's going?
Yeah, I'm here for it. You have the operation reports for December and January. Not really too much to know, obviously, with all the rain, the flow of the wastewater plant has been higher than normal. Good news, bad news, we're not failing the BODs anymore, we've been looking into that. We did just have a failure on zinc. It's just such a strict limit that I don't really have an answer for you. I mean, it's a .04, you get a .07, you violate. I mean, it's that strict. Other things going on is we took all five apart today, started cleaning that and rehabbing Some good news, last week we sent divers into the Stallion Hill water tank. As you know, that tank's 52 years old, we're looking to replace it. Our concern was the interior coating had been noted to show signs of failure. We wanted to make sure that it wasn't failing so that we could keep utilizing it till we do the engineering and come up with the money for the new tank. So it was found to be in good condition, so we can leave it in service while we go through the process of hiring an engineer, putting it out to bid, and then eventually you have to build a new tank. I mean, it's 52 years old, it's done its life cycle. But the good news is we can keep using it until we get to that point. Shut down the cobag system this morning because we're going to put in four new mixes. The mixes are only made till last five years, we're in year 12. If we just went out and bought new mixes, it would have been 120,000. Fortunately for me, and fortunately for the town, my mechanic is one of the best around, we just bought new gearboxes instead of doing the whole thing. So we're going to do three now and one with next year's money. It'll cost about 40 grand, so it saves the town about $8,000. So really blessed to have this guy, I just can't say enough about him. The money he saves this town, he's been with me for 15 years, it's incredible. So kudos to him. Lead and copper. So there's new revisions on the lead and copper rules being pushed down from EPA, which gets pushed down to the EPA, which gets pushed down to us. So with Heather and the help of Jeremy, we'll be putting together a survey to send out to customers, asking them to help us out with taking pictures and sending them to us, or either that or letting us in their house to do that on our own. As you know, a lot of people, especially since COVID, don't want people in their house. I completely understand that, so we're going to give them the option of doing it both ways. So it's not something that we want to do, it's something we have to do. The town has a requirement. Come up with a lead and copper inventory just to make sure that people don't have lead pipes. I've never seen one in the 18 years I've been here. I've spoken to the people that have worked here before me, they've never seen them, so I can't sit here and say with 100%, there is no lead pipe in town, but the majority of it I can say is copper and plastic. So you're going to hear us about working on that also. And the only other thing I have for you is Heather and I submitted a budget. My budgets are in for your review when you guys, at your convenience.
Great, thank you. Does the board have any questions?
Not on the reports, I read that, but there's been a lot on Facebook, which I don't put too much stake in, but we've always had, you know, appeals on water. And somebody, a couple of people said there's a list of people who have leaks.
So I'm aware of the Facebook posts, you know, I'm on social media too, I see it too, and I know exactly what we're talking about. We've met internally, there is a leak list. We've had it for years, it's always been a tool to help people with high water bills. We're looking, doing some other things right now, and I'm doing that with Heather and Robin, and once we get to that point, Robin will update the board.
Okay, and there was also mentioned an app that people can, it's expensive, but people can use it.
That'll be in, so we're going to address that too at the same time. And yes, that's correct, there is an app.
Okay, thank you, because you know it's.
I understand completely. I'm the one that feels the phone calls, I know what we're talking about, and like I said, we've looked into it, we've met internally. We're going to try and come up with maybe a better program than what we have, and once we do that, Robin will report back to you.
Right, I mean, even on the appeals, I mean.
That will be coming to you, that appeal, next meeting.
And I'll be here for that also.
Which one?
The what, well, the.
The appeal.
The initial one that, we have a request for an appeal based on one of the postings that was on Facebook, the person who had posted.
Oh, okay.
Has also, we met internally.
I bet I spoke to that person and told them what the process was.
Right, so we went through the initial process of Barbara, Heather, and myself, and based on the policy that's been in place, we determined it is one that would move forward to the board, it would not be an internal, it's not like a bill correction, let's say.
It's in the timeline.
Yes, it is, it's, well, we've got to look at that from within the timeline of when we were notified, so.
So customers are always advised, if they're going to appeal, to at least pay the bill upfront so they don't accrue penalties and interest. I'll reach out to that customer again today to reinforce that.
Yeah, because they get 30 days after.
Right, and the customers reached out about a potential for payment plan and whatnot, which we certainly always are willing to do. We are looking right now with our attorneys, though, as far as, someone could know if they could ask for an update on the leak list, but we also have to know, while some things are public record, a lot of people, for instance, use a PO box, don't want someone to know where their address is. There is a lot of discussion, what exactly is public record? So if I release a leak list to somebody, I'm giving anybody who might have a leaks record out, and that means their home address, or the address that they're paying a water bill at. And so I'm confirming with KP exactly how much I can release publicly as well. I mean, we'll release it, if it's public information, we'll release it, but I just want to make sure that we also don't invade someone else's privacy. We just had sort of the opposite issue on Facebook where something that wasn't even a valid record is out there, and somebody felt sort of offended by that, being out there, and it wasn't even a valid, we had said it's not an official record. So we have to, so we have, you know, some people who want all the information released, and we have other people who say don't put out anything, and they're dancing between it.
Because even the post office boxes now, there are places, well, I go down the common, they don't have mailboxes.
Exactly. And, you know, you have people who, for whatever reason, use a PO box and prefer that people don't know where they live, police officers sometimes, schoolteachers sometimes. I mean, there are people in professions where they prefer that their home address is not public. So we have to look through and make sure that we're not violating anybody's privacy rights as well, while respecting the other person's right to public information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shane.
Anything else? Nothing else from?
Nope.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm okay. How are you guys?
Good, good.
So I know you have my two monthly reports. Basically, you know, we're in the middle of winter, battling winter as it is. As you can see, December wasn't as snowy as January, you have lots of time dedicated in January for snow and winter removal items.
We actually have a Tuesday that we are not out clearing, spate every Tuesday and Sunday.
And Sunday, yes.
Sundays and Tuesdays this year.
I actually had a weekend this year that I didn't get a phone call from the police, not that I don't like to speak to your dispatchers, they're all quite pleasant when they call me, but I was very shocked.
No one's pleasant after 1:00 on a Saturday morning.
Even Saturday, even this Saturday morning, when we were getting those snow showers, I was, came into town to check roads because I hadn't heard anything, and I was like, oh, we are getting lucky right now, and I will take it, all day, I'll take it. So, yes, we're battling the elements, and hopefully, I do, we are seeing a turn potentially in the weather, even coming up this week. Not so great for our skating rink, but.
Oh, I know.
But really, it is still preferred. I think we're all to the point where we want spring to come, things to thaw out. Even my crew is, we're starting to nibble down to what can we do with the snowy conditions and the snow-covered roads and everything else. But, so we are still doing our normal, trying to keep potholes at bay, patching potholes, and I would encourage anybody listening that if they do know of a pothole, don't just assume that we're going to know about it and that would do it. I don't, we don't take offense for somebody calling and saying, hey, there's a pothole on this road, because we're not on every road every day. So please feel free to call us, we will, we will take care of it, we will address it as quickly as possible, so I will say that. And if anybody has any other issues that they know of, down branches or things that happen, same idea, we don't assume that we have eyes everywhere, because we don't, we are out and about town a lot, and my guys are on a lot of the roads at different times, but are trying to clean up any of those little items that we can. We've been out chipping brush, trimming back trees, doing that type of maintenance.
I think it's important, as Heather brings us up, if people live on privates who may be listening, we get to those potholes, it's just very hard to keep up on them on the privates because the roads themselves, many are dirt roads, we are not by bylaw allowed to grade. We go in and we fill potholes, but she could not do that, her teams could not do that as long as the roads had water and puddles, which.
Right, or icy conditions, which a lot of, not all of them, some of the private roads have been experiencing extreme icy conditions because of the freeze-thaw cycles that we've been going through. And another thing that has happened, and I will explain, with the private roads that are gravel, this year, again, we've had extreme freeze-thaw cycles. We haven't had a really cold, consistent period of time, so we don't have a good frost level in the ground. And the gravel roads have been very soft, extremely soft, where to the fact, sometimes when we plow, and we've had to plow, we're scuffing, or the roads are chattering because the plow's on the gravel, and it's soft and it's not a firm surface to be at. There isn't a lot that we can do about that, unfortunately, it's going to happen. We will help as much as we can come spring when they finally thaw out and we don't have muddy conditions. So there's, there are certain times of the year that you cannot touch a gravel road because you will actually make the conditions worse. In the, if you have ever been to Vermont, they call it mud season because you cannot get on some roads because it's actually worse than being frozen. Once they start softening, they become so soft, as soon as you start touching them, they turn to almost a complete muddy mess. They don't have any structure in them, and they will just, will actually get worse when you try to touch them. They have to be dried out, so when it comes spring, when we can get around and we know that we're not going to make situations worse, we will bring additional gravel and make sure we get those potholes filled. But right now, unfortunately, we are going to be dealing with that come for the next couple months as this freeze-thaw cycle has happened. We had a lot of runoff on certain roads where we were getting those rainy events, and then it would thaw and it would freeze, and it would run to more, and we'd be having these large ice areas. And again, there's not a lot we can do about that when there's not proper drainage and not proper places for the water to go. So I do expect that we will be getting calls come spring on some of them. Right now, everything seems to be pretty settled, and we are out patching, you know, our paved roads and our private paved roads as much as we can with cold mix and keeping them at bay. And then once spring hits again, hopefully, we will be able to get out there with hot mix and do some repairs. But the one thing I think we also, you may or may not know, you're looking at, in come, we actually had one of our large trucks go down in one of our last storms. We have one 10-wheeler and six, five-wheeler, six-wheelers, six, six-wheelers, and one of them is down. So if we have another storm, which even this last storm, which was not as small as they said it was going to be, when it kept, it was big and it kept getting smaller, but not here, it just didn't happen, which actually wasn't as, wasn't horrible, but we were down one large vehicle, so I'm really hoping that we don't have any more major events because being down one out of six trucks will put, will limit us in our snow removal activities and how fast we can actually get around and how well the town, you know, the major roads will be kept. So do, we will be speaking with Finance Committee tomorrow night about replacing that engine. It is the quickest way for us to get a truck back. If not, we're probably talking a whole snow season, not just this season, but the following season, and potentially even the season after that to get a.
We would have preferred to buy new, given the cost of the repair and the age of the vehicle, but if we have to wait two winters, we can't.
We can't, which is, which is the reality right now. I mean, I think we've all seen it in different things, but trucks seem to really be being hit hard, larger vehicles, I think private, you know, personal vehicles, we've kind of started to come back to see some inventory on lots in different places, but even then, it's a lot spotty. I personally am shopping for a car, so I know, like, when I go, I'm like, all right, this is all the tier, I'm looking at this huge lot with a quarter full, but for a while it was even less than that. But when you start talking to the manufacturers of, you know, NAC, it's just amazing, they're like, you know, well, I can't even tell you how many trucks I'm going to be able to sell next year, and you're already going to be number 15 on the list, and I might not even be allotted that money. So it's a very scary prospect when we start looking at that. And then from there, once you buy the chassis, then you still have to upfit it. So we know a truck that we bought last year is sitting up the upfitter to have the rest of the equipment put on, and we're, again, we are waiting on a list to be able to get there and them to get everything in that you're looking for. So even once the chassis comes in, doesn't mean you're going to get your truck anytime soon. It's kind of the new world of construction vehicles for us, and sometimes, buying them off the lot is not an option anymore. It used to be you could get a leftover almost sitting there, but that's not really the case anymore.
The board have any questions for?
Heather, I noticed on your January report, sewer permits, $5,500 collected. How many permits is that?
So I believe, at the top of my head, I'm not, no, because I, that should, that might just be one permit. It's 5,000 per connection fee.
Plus.
Plus the, plus the application fee.
Just dropped me, I don't call. Just dropped me, I don't call seeing that number before. Thank you. No.
No, I'm set.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
God bless. Good night.
Oh, I'll stick around for my one contract in case there's questions.
Okay. Town administrator update. Robin, do you have any?
Yeah, very quickly, just as an update, on February 6th, I went to the, actually the treasure collector annual meeting. The Worcester Regional Retirement people were there in the keynote, just giving some of the actuarial numbers and nothing earth-chattering for Sturbridge. We're jogging along probably in an average increase. Nothing looks disproportionate for us. But it's just nice to kind of hear what's going on there. On February 15th, along with Chief Desert and Deputy Chief Martel, we attended a meeting at Spencer with the town administrator and several town administrators and public safety chiefs to discuss, I had mentioned to you, the concept of regional dispatch and you had all authorized a letter for us to at least engage in a study. So we talked a little more about that study and Spencer's police chief, I believe, is the one who's going to take the lead on writing the grant to get the study done. So that's an update on that. A little bit of the pool administrative position. Crystal left. Crystal is the second employee to leave that position. I have exit interviews. Some of them involve personnel matters, so those can be shared with the board confidentially. But there were some other things that were not personnel-related that, what made me want to take a little bit of a look at possibly splitting that position. Right now, that was a center office building, pool clerk and administrative assistant with an understanding that they would be a pool clerk for both sides of the street, if you will, as needed. What we're finding is that there's some reception type work from 10 to 12 when people are out on lunch breaks and whatnot. It is nice to have somebody manning that. In fact, I sat there today and took in a couple of NOIs for conservation, you know, because again, at the timing of the day, the office wasn't there, I, you know, timestamped stuff and put it in. So, and a few people pop by. So I just kind of wanted to sit over there and see what the flow is. So there's, I think, a need to have somebody there who can do some of the copying and the basic administrative tasks. But what we also found was that Crystal was being used by some of the departments for some pretty advanced things, but not necessarily enough to keep her in that one location to answer the phones while she's doing that. So she currently, I think, is going to be doing some work anyway out of the elections budget, separate from us, because Lynn had worked with her and brought her over. So what I think I'm looking at doing is actually splitting the one full-time into two part-times with slightly separate focuses. Keeping someone 10 to 12, you know, all the time, Monday through Thursday, let's say, sitting there, picking up some of the day-to-day work that those departments could use help with, setting up packets, photocopying, things like that. And then use Crystal to do some more of the administrative assistant work, continuing to work. She did a lot of work with Terry, she did a lot of work with recreation, she did a good bit of work with Jean Boubon. So letting those people still have access to that work, but also including her more here to assist, let's say, in elections when we have things cycling up for elections, or have a backup person who understands the payroll system or when W2s all have to go out. She's very competent and we really would hate to lose her. And she is willing to stay on part-time, which I was pleased with. So we probably would house her on this side, but again, she would still be available, as we had said all along, to assist the other departments over there as well.
I just have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, through the chat, is that okay?
Of course.
Did you say 10 to 12 now? And here it's written 10 to 2.
Oh, I'm sorry, 10 to 2.
It's 10 to 2, the correct.
Yeah, so it should be 10 to 2 across the street, four days a week likely. 10 to 2 for somebody to be there to cover those lunch hours or when people are out in the field if somebody's not in, just to have a body there.
Yeah, so, I mean, I get it. Just one of the things that comes to mind, though, is I thought when we, like, proved this other position, a primary thing that they were going to be doing is, we made it, you know, not, how should I put it? It was, it was to benefit our departments and their workload, but one of the primary reasons was for residents to always be able to be in touch with someone. That was like the primary goal.
Yep.
And now it seems like it's kind of morphed into just like two hours of that function and kind of a second hand for all of the staff. I'm not saying that's good or bad, but I'm just saying the way it was kind of presented to us is to always have somebody available to answer. Now I feel like that role has, like, gone down to two hours.
You would have that four hours a day, 10 to 2.
Oh, 10 to 2, I'm sorry.
It would still be there four hours a day. And based on what we were finding and what we were told, there's really very little resident activity, 8 to 10, there's very little. It's really during those lunch hours when they need somebody to be there, to just be a body there to collect things, you know, if it's, whatever it might be, somebody comes in looking for someone in inspections. The reality is what we were told the needs of those departments are.
Necessarily.
And what appears to be the case, maybe dynamics change, maybe workflow changes, but based on what I'm seeing in actual practice and based on what the two people who are over there, two people separately now have said, kind of needed to reevaluate that, do I still think there's a need? Yes. Do I think there's a need for general assistance in all of our departments without more staffing in every department? Because I can tell you the things that I would have, let's say if Crystal were to stay on, the things that I would have her do are not things that any, that would be enough to fill up anybody's time for a full-time job. But are they important? You know, is it important that during elections, Lynn could have somebody that she doesn't have to be relying on hiring temporary help, but have somebody there? Is it important that Terry still has the assistance to reach out to the businesses when he's doing this map to make sure he's included everything for them as a backup for him? Is it important, Annie needed someone to assist her with setting up her budget out of QuickBooks into the MUNIS system. And Crystal was able to do all those things to assist those departments in the areas where, particularly those departments that don't have a second person. And so I don't want to lose that. That need is still there.
I get it.
But what we did find is that the traffic, the workload, the, you know, everybody's on their phone so much that they can't help the public.
Is not necessarily borne out.
That's not what I'm hearing from them. I've only been over there one day myself during those hours to see, but it wasn't overwhelming.
So here, so I'm just going to say, here's my concern a little bit. So the original purpose for that full-time position you're finding, based upon the feedback of the exit interviews, was not necessarily there for a full-time position. They were, I mean, I don't want to, so...
I have personnel issues as well.
I get it, I get it. But let me also say this.
There's enough work.
One, one thing that I'm worried about is, I don't have a problem with the two-part-time now, but I feel like what starts to happen is, I will not be in favor of one of these morphing into a full-time position.
No.
And then the other one staying part-time, because now we've got a whole nother half of position that we didn't plan on. And I feel like sometimes...
Absolutely, yes.
You know, like our economic, we wanted a full-time position, but for a long time, Terry's position, for example, was part-time. We made it full-time because we found a need and now I'm hearing from you that he even has a need for assistance. And I just feel like this is kind of how we, like, make our staff even more aware.
Ideally, this is still, this should still be one, it should still be one full-time position.
That would have been my preference, one position.
And it is my preference still, but based on other things that are also involved in those exit interviews, it's not going to work. And that, I, I, it really frustrates me to say that, but it is not going to work the way it is set up now. So I have absolutely no intention of adding any positions. We do not need to add full-time positions. We need floaters. And those are not typically, there's not a full-time need unless it was that one person that could do all of it. And even if we did that, was that person going to have to leave that desk sometimes to do some of that? Yes. In fairness to everybody involved, I'm not trying to disparage anybody. The nature of it is, sometimes a person might have to come over here. We did send toward the end, I think Crystal got sent back with work from Lynn, back to her desk over, you know, over there. She brought work back. I think that there's enough, and I don't know how many hours, it may be eight to 10 hours for the second part of that job. The one part that would be the set hours would be the 10 to 12. The other hours would be more as needed. They may not necessarily be locked in at a certain number of hours. So it may be some weeks she works four hours, it may, and she's willing, in this particular case, not to talk about a particular person, but given that, yeah, we, we kind of have to. She's willing to do six hours, eight hours, 10 hours. She is willing to work part-time for us. On the upshot, we save on a pension, no retirement, no concern about benefits packages, so...
And you don't think that we could just make, because they didn't have the amount of phone answering that we thought we needed, we don't think we could do it on, with just a half a position then, of the part-time position, because it didn't end up being as busy as, as we thought it was going to be.
We probably, we, we might be able to, but then enough to just cover over there, but it would never offer any assistance on this side, which was also part of the plan, was that it would offer assistance to both sides. So if it's doing 10 to 2, four days a week, realistically, it could probably assist a little bit over there. But again, I think there are other reasons that that would not necessarily work.
Okay. Okay, I, I would like to see it written up. I don't recall that that person was going to come over here too. I thought it was strictly the C O B building. So I would like to see what they've been doing, what you expect them to do. It seems to me that, well, everybody needs help, but it seems, you know, this is going, I don't know, Lynn downstairs, she's got help, you know?
Well, exactly. But during elections time, for example, she's relying heavily on volunteers. We use the library staff, you know.
Yeah.
Again, not, it's cyclical.
But, no, but could I...
Right.
Write it up? And I would also like to read the exit surveys.
Absolutely, I will send those to you.
There you go.
I'll follow up with that, but I just wanted to kind of put it on your radar because I'm sure there's, there's buzz. Everybody knows when someone's here, when someone leaves, so maybe buzz.
So maybe for our next meeting, you will be able to share the personnel reasons in an executive session, is that how?
I can send you the, when they fill out the exit interviews, it specifically says may be shared with the board of selectmen.
Okay.
So they're aware that will be shared. If it becomes an executive session, anybody who might be discussed...
Yes.
Has a right to, has a right to be noticed.
If you're able to share it without, that's great.
I can share it for informational purposes with the board. It's just a confidential document, but if we're not going to discuss it, if at any point we want to have further discussion on it, then it becomes an executive session. And we have to be careful of a rolling quorum. I can't talk to each of you individually about it and sort of then collectively do something. So we'll just, you know, yes, you have every right to see the exit interviews.
Right, because I know we had council's opinion, the same thing with the reviews of the department heads, that we as a board can avail.
Yes, you have a right to see them.
Yep.
Yep. So I will get you a Michelle scan and get everybody individually copies, just not for discussion.
That sounds good.
Yep. Conservation agent, we have received several applications. In fact, we just received one now that popped in on my email while I was sitting here. So I'm putting just together a little team. It's going to be Heather, Jean and myself, Jean Boubon and myself to review the applicants. Once we select a top candidate, I certainly will offer the Chair of the Conservation Commission the opportunity to sit down with that person as well, because they are going to have to work closely together. And then I would bring that person forward to the board for approval. So we're looking at, I think, March 1st is the deadline for applications. I believe you've got four or five in now, if you include the one I got tonight. And we've still got a post with the Mass Conservation Commission that's, posting still hasn't gone up, so we'll have maybe possibly a few more, so.
I just had a question about that. Did you, do we have an exit interview?
I have an exit interview set up with Becky on the 29th, yes.
Because it's a big loss to us. I was very sorry to hear her news.
She has a lot of room for growth where she's going.
No, I understand. So it's, it's good for her. She's young and she's...
Yeah.
There's a lot of opportunity, so.
We will do an exit interview with her.
All right. And then my other question is, I don't even know if the Chair would want it. Is, would, would it not be appropriate to have, like, somebody from the Conservation Committee in, whether it's a Chair or a designee? I feel like they're the ones that have more expertise personally than, say, on, on conservation matters than maybe one or more of the people that you have sitting in. That would be my input.
It becomes, it becomes a little bit conflicted because they don't work for the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, but no, I, they don't work for them, but they, you know, with all due respect to some of these department heads, I feel like somebody from conservation has more knowledge of the conservation statute and laws than, just like if we were hiring somebody, a new recreation director, for example, my suggestion would have been somebody from the Recreation Committee to be on that informal committee meeting people.
That one's a little different. That is an elected body and you typically would in that case. I will say, I've not had a practice of having people who sit on committees or commissions interview candidates. I think it makes people in the interviews a little uncomfortable. I think it creates a bit of an unfair dynamic for that commission if that one person has sat in and has sort of been a recommendation on hiring as opposed to the other people. I mean, you all as a board kind of have to put a representative for me, but I work directly for you. I, I have just not found it a good practice. I certainly think that the Chair or a designee or two, you know, two without a quorum issue certainly should meet the candidate and certainly if there was some glaring issues, then that would be a problem. I may, I have talked about even, we're going to have Rebecca look at the questions, make sure the questions are appropriate. And I may possibly get, send her a copy of all the resumes, just to have her just take a peek at the resumes.
As an alternative, if you're not comfortable with a committee member. A lot of, I don't know, when we hired Heather, I thought that we had Butch sit in as, as on that committee to elect, to, not elect, but to choose Heather. I thought for sure he was...
I, I don't know. And again, I, you know, I...
So I mean, again, I would, I would personally, I mean, this is just me, but did you consider having our conservation agent?
I did think about it.
As a committee?
But I think having her review resumes, make sure they're qualified, get her opinion on those resumes. I think, again, it taints the answers. It makes people feel they have to do it the way Becky does it, which is not a bad thing, but I want to hear people answer questions without feeling that they're trying to fit into a mold of someone else. I think it changes the feeling of an interview. I'm really not comfortable with that. I, I...
I'm just used to having somebody with expertise. Like, so let me ask you this, what made you choose these, what made you choose the people that you did?
Because in many communities, planning and conservation are very closely related. And in this community, planning and conservation are very closely related. Jean has a very good knowledge of what a conservation agent needs to be as a teammate, is in her, in her working with Becky. I know she was very strong in supporting Becky when Becky got hired. So I know Jean has the experience and knowledge of handling that. And Heather has a tremendous background as an engineer with stormwater and wastewater and, excuse me, stormwater runoff and everything that has to do when we sit and do our, our site plan meetings, for example. And so I think both of those people have the expertise to know what it is they need to supplement their knowledge. I mean, my goal when I put a team together is to find people who not have the same knowledge, but enhance each other's knowledge. So Jean...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to stand for that. My preference would be if Becky were, were on this committee as well.
Well, I'm going to have her review, but it really, you know, Jean and I, for example, were talking today, she had been the interim conservation agent at one point many years ago. And she said, you know, I have the knowledge to do X, Y, Z, but I don't have the knowledge to do blah, blah, blah. So we want someone who has that knowledge, for example. And that's what we'll look for. And that's what I also want to hear from Becky when she's reviewing those resumes, will be sort of her input on, you know, this person's going to be able to do the types of things we need in Sturbridge. But I'd like a little bit of separation.
Okay. So if you were hiring another, like, I know you're not leaving, D P W Director or Jean, you would not have either Heather or Jean sit in?
I would probably not have Heather sit in on that, I don't know.
Okay, in the same way?
No, I respect Heather greatly, but I would not.
I will say, in which is the case he was retiring and...
I don't see a difference there, though. He, he was on the...
He was on my team.
He was on the committee, because that's typically...
And when I was hired, we actually overlapped for a period.
I know, but we...
I don't think that's going to be the possibility here. It's not really an option with the...
Right. But still, regardless of whether or retiring, that whole idea of imposing your view is no different than somebody retiring or somebody moving to a different position, at least for that reason, for not wanting somebody on it. So I'm just, I'm just putting it out there. I, and I don't even know if she wanted to be on the committee. I'm just saying, when I looked at this...
And I was talking about the review of resumes. In fact, I talked to, Barbara and I were chatting about it just in general the other day and about options of how to do that and include her in the process in a way that isn't directly in the interview, but still has her input. And as I said, I think reviewing the resumes, if she sees a red flag on something, you know, I'm going to want her to say to, eh, or, you know, yeah, this person's education from such and such a place is a strong background or not. You know, those are the things she's going to know. But I just, I, I just think this is the cleanest, most fair way to do it.
And just to clarify, so you're going to have that interview committee and then a member of the Conservation Board, possibly two, hold... a member of the Conservation Board, possibly two, hopefully two, will meet with the candidate and give their approval, and then the candidate will.
So if that, before I announce it publicly.
Yes.
I would ask Conservation to meet with the person, just to chat with them one or two, just to feel comfortable?
Yeah, but I don't think it's for approval. I don't think they have that authority.
Realistically, if they said to me, if whoever on Conservation said, mm, mm, that's not going to work, and here's why, then I have a second candidate. I'll have a second candidate lined up. I want the input of one or two people on Conservation, two would actually be ideal, but you know, without a quorum issue. I won't have a quorum issue that way. But yeah, I want, you know, and I just spoke very briefly to Ed one day about, hey, I'm going to be getting in touch with you. He asked something about it, and I said, yeah, I'll probably have that person meet you. But it would be before I would put a name out publicly. It would sort of be in a final interview process, that I would move my top candidate forward to them. If there was resistance at that point and I felt that, okay, you know, they're bringing up some valid points here, then I'll go back. I just think in those preliminary interviews, I don't want the presence, but in a next level to say, yeah, this is a good choice, we think this will fit, or you know what, Robin, we may have a real big problem here, then I have another candidate in line. I'm hoping I have like two to three qualified candidates to move forward. So I'm trying to pick up what it is you are concerned about, which is a conservation, understanding needs of conservation.
More expertise.
Yep.
And I'm just used to having somebody in that line of work, like we had, and I know you think it's different, but we had Butch, and when Butch said, you know, this is a strong, you know, it's my, it adds a little bit more reassurance to me that that person is the right person, you know?
I'm sorry.
I'm done, I'm done.
The only thing I'll say too is when Butch was hired, when Heather was hired, we had an interim T A. We did not have a full-time T A, which does make a difference in my opinion.
With all due respect to the police chief, if he was retired tomorrow, which we certainly hope he is not, but if he was retiring tomorrow or if Heather was leaving, I would not have him sit in as my, on my selection panel.
No, but perhaps we had a police, like when we hired the.
Yep.
This is your call. We've always had somebody in that line of work. Like we've had, not this chief, but we've had, you know, a chief from another.
I'm charged, so.
Right.
Who would be on it.
Yeah, and when we had the fire chief, we had, you know, chiefs from other.
Yeah, yours is actually defined.
We've had chiefs in that line of work.
And I have done that as well from out of town.
Not from the same community.
But not from the same community, yeah, from out of town. I did do that with a fire chief in the past where I had an assessment center. When this case, I think the expertise with an experience of someone like Jean and Heather's background and the fact that those two positions have to work extraordinarily closely with Conservation makes it critical that there's a good fit because it's beyond just qualifications, it's also personality and fit. I'm really, you know, part of this is when you lose someone who's a strong presence, making sure that whoever comes in can fit into that role in a whole host of ways becomes very important to me.
Hey Lou, do you have anything to?
Nope, none of that.
All right.
I'm going to skip, I'll go back to liquor license request. Student Officer Kingman, you got an email from the Chief, a message from the Chief. Was it in the packet?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I said, that's something you both, I gave Chief.
Oh, okay.
Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't own him.
All right. Sturbridge Police recruit Devon Kingman honored for life-saving car rescue along with his fellow classmates. Greetings, Sturbridge. Please take a moment and join me in congratulating our very own student officer Devon Kingman for receiving a life-saving award through the Municipal Police Training Committee. On January 25th, 2024, Kingman along with other student officers of the Holyoke Second Recruit Officer Course were traveling to an off-site location for training when he and a group of other student officers encountered a serious traffic crash on the Holyoke Westfield Mine. Kingman and his fellow classmates quickly sprang into action and rendered aid until first responders from Holyoke arrived on scene. Kingman was hired by the Sturbridge Police Department in September of 2023 after serving as an intern with our agency. Shortly after being hired, Kingman was assigned to the Second R O C in Holyoke. The R O C is an entry-level training curriculum for our new full-time police officers. This is 20-week course that covers 21st century policing, best practices with specific emphasis on following core principles, problem-solving, procedural justice, ethical decision-making, fair and impartial policing. Kingman is set to graduate the R O C on March 22nd, 2024. Upon graduation from the R O C, Kingman will be assigned to a comprehensive field training program at the Sturbridge Police Department that will last a minimum of 13 weeks. Kingman, on behalf of the men and women of the Sturbridge Police Department, we are proud of you for your courageous actions that you displayed on January 25th, 2024. Way to represent the Sturbridge Police Department and job well done. We are looking forward to getting you on patrol here in Sturbridge. Keep up the strong work. So that's, that's great news. That's impressive. Stay in the lines before we even start the job.
Loving that.
Can't beat that. So, thank you.
And pass along our thanks, please, to him. And then finally, liquor license request, so this is sort of a chicken and egg argument. We've been asked by someone who's looking to open a package store if we can move forward with some state legislation to ask for license relief. So as you know, we have a cap based on population and whatnot. We have sort of a unique situation in Sturbridge because we have a tourist population, so we, in some cases, may need more licenses than a community of 9,800 or whatever typically would need. However, you know, again, it would have to go through state legislation. The person doesn't have a specific location for the package store, so it's, you know, they're looking to possibly invest in buying a property, and I can understand they want to know if they're going to be able to get a license before they buy a property, but again, here's my chicken and egg problem. So I'm asking if the board wants me to consider a warrant on the license cap. If you got the relief, it doesn't mean you have to grant the licenses. It would just be generally a relief on the cap. Given the licenses cannot be held, if we did this, we probably would ask for two or three because if we did it and someone came along before this person closed on the property for something else and you wanted to give both, then we wouldn't have enough. We cannot hold licenses. Someone, if we have rights to them and someone comes and asks if by coincidence two package stores want to open up, then that guy who originally started this would be kind of out of luck if someone else came first. So I guess the question is, if we can, and I believe we can, without it specifically going to someone, get relief on the number, does the board want me to consider a warrant? It still is not, it still has to go to town meeting. The question is, is this something we should consider or before I put it on there for you to vote on it, because eventually you're going to vote yea or nay on the warrant article or recommendation of yea or nay. I could put it, or before your recommendation, up or down, and you can review it at that point, or are we in a position where we say, you know what, we really just don't want to go the state legislation route?
Well, I personally wouldn't be in favor of it. I mean, we have a cap on, you know, this off-premise package store. We do not have a cap on porn licenses for the very reason we are tourists. Plus, I mean, if this person had a building already, had a place, I'm just not, I'm not in favor of it.
Are you done, Mary?
Yes, oh, sorry.
No, I'm such a naysayer tonight. I, you know, I agree. I feel like this is too much being targeted for one individual who doesn't even have or a company that doesn't even have a location, and I most definitely would not be in favor of seeking two or three package licenses just so that we indirectly try to hold one for this person.
Or we could do one, I mean, yeah.
I know, but two or three, I mean, and we've already, we're already, we went over our cap a few times.
Two.
Two, we did it for Ocean State Job Lot and an extra martyr, I believe. So we've already done it twice. So I feel like we have a good amount of package stores personally because we've done it twice and I definitely, you know, if the person, I definitely wouldn't be in favor of seeking two or three more. I can't.
I guess mine's a process question. You know, do I move forward to put it on a warrant or, and have you vote zero to five against it or whatever the vote would be, or do we even?
I personally am not in favor of it. I think we have, we've gone over our limit. We have the largest liquor store in Massachusetts in our town. I don't think we need more.
I totally agree.
Okay. And the person, we can let the person know they have the right to petition to have a warrant article added? That's always, if he's a resident, that's certainly always the public's choice. So that may be the way to go because I don't want to stop his right to have a warrant article in front of town meeting.
Oh, of course, you can.
So you certainly can tell him that if he was a resident and wanted to petition to do it, but that the will of this board at this point would not be to support a warrant article going forward. Okay, I just wanted to run it by you guys before I went through it.
Yeah.
Beautiful, and that is, I think, is that it for me? That's it for me.
Anybody have any questions for Robin, or anything else, or?
And the 23rd for the retreat?
March, I have to double check.
Okay.
Yes, March 23rd.
March 23rd.
Yes, yep, yep.
Give me the hard questions.
Beautiful.
Hearing no other questions, we'll move on to action items. And action item A, we have completed during the open hearing. Was there some discussion about Altrus Brewing adding to that approval or?
I think you just have to vote.
Is that, this wasn't a part of the public hearing?
Right, it didn't get combined like you did the first one, so you just need to vote on that one.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application filed by Yankee Spirits Inc. for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers, and change of pledge of license, stock or inventory.
I, we, well, so Yankee, we did the Altrus.
I'm sorry.
Yep, no, that's all right.
I'll make a motion to accept the application filed by Altrus Brewing Company LLC for a change of manager and change of officers, directors, LLC managers.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor? Action item C, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Bradford Merkel as a three-year police officer at the hourly rate of $36.28 effective February 26, 2024.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
How you doing?
Chair's a little bit more comfortable than the bench.
We'd like to let you sit on that.
Good evening. Tonight I bring in front of you Bradford Merkel. Brad worked for us from April of '23 to October '23 before he had a momentary lapse in judgment and decided to return to his previous employer at the Warren Police Department. He did so based on some enticing offers that was made to come back. Right now, I'm sure you've heard, getting police officers today has been very, very difficult, and chiefs all over Commonwealth are trying to find, where do you get police officers, where do you get police officers? Brad went back over to the police department. Unfortunately, things didn't go through probably the way the chief visioned it when he made some offers, so Brad reached back out to me and said, hey, you wouldn't mind coming back? I mean, would, I mind if he came back. And based on Brad's work performance, his education, the way he held himself as a Sturbridge Police Officer, I had no reservations about bringing him back as, back as a Sturbridge Police Department. He does hold a business administration degree out of Florida State University. One of the problems with Brad leaving is when he left, he was, he was paid out all his accrued time minus his sick time and his personal time. So I would make the recommendation that he be hired, come back as a three-year employee for as far as salary goes, which is the 36.28. However, I would, I'd also be recommending that he only receive the vacation time, his vacation time of completing that full year of service as if this was the start date again. So he's already been paid out for it, so we can't, it's not right to give it to him again. So he's going to have to wait a whole year before he'll recapture his vacation time. However, he did have personal time that he didn't use, so I would recommend that he be able to recapture his personal time and his 72 hours of sick time that he did not use while he was here, and then just continue as a probationary employee for an additional six months as a, as a new hire. Those were the caveats to this appointment.
The board have any questions?
No, welcome back.
And that sounds reasonable, everything you laid out in terms of personal time and recognizing the three years and.
Yeah, we're glad to get somebody with experience. We've been, we still have an additional opening and we've been advertising for probably two and a half, three months now, and we've had zero qualified applicants coming in the door, so, and it's not Sturbridge, it is across the United States right now. We're having a very, very difficult time in this industry recruiting police officers. It's just not a, when I was applying for the job, people were lined up around the door to get into the police office.
Sad, really.
Yeah, and they're just.
Our show last week, where, Minneapolis, was Minneapolis?
Yeah.
Police officers shot and had to be stuck?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and you know, post George Floyd, a lot of things have changed with the police in the industry as far as, you know, just, it's not a desire to be on the front page of the newspaper anytime something bad happens, and unfortunately, that is the nature of our business right now, so, you know, we're doing our best to recruit. There's a lot of changes coming up with the recruiting across the United States. I'm seeing many different schedule changes, bonuses, all these different incentives to try to get police officers in the door. So we did get a qualified person, fortunately he was good enough to bring back in front of you, so I'm glad to get him up and get him running to fill one of our vacancies.
Yeah, you're not rethinking your chosen profession after all this?
Nope, 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 not at all.
After listening to us, listening to the chief.
I mean, it's just a difference. I mean, I started the academy in 2010, 2011, so I don't have the time as the chief does, but I mean, I'm almost 10, 12 years in the career field and just the change that I've seen. When I graduated college in 2009, we were in the worst economic downturn where you couldn't even find a job anywhere. And I mean, I travel, I was down in Florida at the time and I was traveling from the top of the state always down to the bottom, applying for jobs, trying to find it, and it was, you know, hard to find one. So it's, it's a different time, definitely a different time out there. I'm thankful that the chief has allowed me to come back and with your recommendation. I'd be happy to be back. His first few weeks are going to be foot patrol at the water treatment facility.
And we'll be monitoring his form for any calls from nearby chiefs that might be calling. I had that discussion firsthand at that dispatch meeting about cherry picking chiefs and cherry picking officers.
Other chiefs stealing other officers.
It's very enlightening to sit and watch them talk to each other.
Now, Chief, he's gone through all the training, so he'll be ready to start patrol when he's.
He's not even, because he's been gone for such a short amount of time and he hasn't had any lapse in like police services, he's just going to go right to work. He'll be issued his equipment. Oh, that's another thing, he can't start till the 26th, so I'd ask the appointment to be effective for the 26th. He will go right to work, be issued his stuff the morning of the 26th and go, go right to work from there.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Merkel as a three-year police officer with an hourly rate of $36.28 effective February 26, 2024. Mr. Merkel to only receive vacation time, time upon, wow, I got the same thing you got, Mary. Upon completing a full year of service from appointment day, Mr. Merkel to recapture his unused personal time of 24 hours and unused sick time of 72 hours. Mr. Merkel be hired as a probationary police officer, officer as all new officers are hired.
Second that.
The motion, the second, all in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome back. Have a bless.
Congratulations.
Be safe.
He's going to start eating.
Yeah, goes.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. You too, Chief. Now you can relax. Fun's over.
Consideration and possible action on the renewal of existing Department of Army easement for pipeline, right-of-way located on Westville Lake Project.
I think this is sort of a pro forma.
Yeah, but there's just a little typo.
Typo.
Army, Army, and it's the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes. Department of the Army, heard that coming.
Oh, well, it might say.
I think that's what it says on the paper, Department of Army.
Department of Army.
Yeah.
No E.
Yeah, no E in Army, but Department of Army is how the actual document is.
There's no E in Army, I understand. Other than I mean, the easement itself.
Is Department of Army.
Oops.
Any?
That's okay.
Any?
It's why we're all here.
That's right. Any discussion on the easement? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the existing Department of the Army easement for pipeline right-of-way located on the Westville Lake Project.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Did you want to put the cost in there?
There is no cost.
No.
Oh, I wrote it on the wrong page. That's for the other.
No money there.
This one's free.
That's always nice.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next up, we have consideration and possible action authorize the chair to sign the pavement management services agreement with Beta Group, Inc.
You stray forward. Good process. Actually, they're on our.
This is a, so we do, the town has had a pavement management program for years and years. This is a more interactive program than what we've had in the past, but they'll go out in those surveying streets, it will give us a ranking to be able to determine what type of treatment should go on what street, with schedules of, you know, different options for different amount of money that you want to spend, and give a method to getting the best. Want to say bank for your budget? It really is, but, so that you spend your funds, so, you know, we crack seal, we overlay, sometimes you have to full debt reclaim. So, but this is a program so that it says, you know, basically these streets need to be cracked sealed now, it will extend their lives in the future, so you'll have to spend less money on them in the future. It kind of gives you different methods and makes everybody's street evaluated on a consistent basis, instead of just us riding around saying this street needs to be done, and this street needs to be done. So it has actually some engineering background principles to it, and their program ties into our GIS system, so we'll actually have it right in our, you know, be able to tie it, and it's able to be updated. So like, when we do a street, I can change this ranking from needing to be full debt reclaimed, like Ledmine just was, to be brand new, and it reevaluates it, so it doesn't just stay as a static list.
How often do we do this?
It should be done, they recommend that you do it every five to 10 years. Our old list is older, it's reaching that date, and basically, we've gone through everything that we had. We really need to take that and see if the rankings have a more interactive list.
The old list used to be just sort of a ranking, and it didn't take into account, well, how much money do you have? How many miles of roadway can you get on this particular road because, compared to something else? So sometimes you would do one that ranked, let's say, for the sake of argument, you know, a five before, you know, a 10 before a five, because you had so much money, or that 10 really was gonna require a different amount of work, or?
I actually worked with Beta when I was in Southridge, we did look at different situations. Their program is pretty interactive, it actually weights things like, this is a major road versus a minor road, so it has different weighting factors that you can put into it. So it's pretty interactive to get to a different list. It's one of those things that you do, and then kind of use it for a couple of years, and then you want to redo and see if the number's really panned out. So you, five years is really what I would do, if anything more than that, I'd have enough time to do it.
Sounds good. Does the board have any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Hearing none. Do we have a motion on action item E?
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the pavement management services agreement with Beta Group, Inc.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Thank you. Consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to sign the contract with Edward J. Collins, Jr., Center for Public Management, in the amount of $31,500 for accessibility, self-evaluation, and transportation plan update.
So this is the grant that I mentioned last week that Robin had written for us, the mod grant, the Massachusetts Office of Disability. So they will be, the grant will be funding the project being done by the Collins Center. So we were pretty pleased with that.
Great.
And this is the first step toward really getting our Disabilities Commission going. We really need a plan and a study done of what we truly need, and then we put together that Disabilities Commission and have it go from there.
Great. Any questions on the? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the contract with Edward J. Collins, Jr., Center for Public Management, in the amount of $31,500 for accessibility, self-evaluation, and transition plan update.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor? Next up, consideration and possible action accept a resignation letter of Crystal Kowalski, Center Office Building Pool Receptionist, effective February 16, 2024. We touched on this briefly earlier, and we're gonna get some more information regarding part-time position.
Yep, she currently is, as I said, Lynn hired her under her elections budget, which she hires people temporarily anyway for now, but anything further, I'll reach out to you on a form of part-time.
So is she withdrawing this, or?
No, she's resigned from the town as a regular employee.
Okay.
But she, Lynn needs elections help and has an elections budget separate and hires temporary help for elections, so she pretty much hired her on as temporary help.
Hey, I'll make a motion then to accept the letter of resignation from Crystal Kowalski from the position as CLB receptionist slash administrative assistant.
Second it.
Do we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Thank you. Consideration and possible action to vote to forward the proposed zoning amendments to the planning board to begin the public hearing process in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5.
So this is just for you to kick off the process, to authorize planning to move forward? Some of it's cleanup language, we'll be talking a little bit, I think we're gonna try to look at if, I think this batch, we're gonna start to try to look at language on Airbnbs, things like that, but it's just to start the process here, so planning can start reviewing this and have its public hearings before we get to town meeting.
Any questions regarding?
You're not voting to support anything?
No.
Just simply to kick it off.
Okay. Yep.
Hey, I'll make a motion then to forward the proposed zoning amendments to the planning board to begin the public hearing process in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Consideration and possible action to, on the reappointment of Barbara Barry, Finance Director, as parking clerk for a term to expire February 20, 2027.
So I'm gonna like, put this, these next few under the who knew category. It's like, I didn't know, who knew?
Didn't know.
I didn't know, I didn't know we had a fence viewer, a moth inspector, which makes sense, actually, or a parking clerk. So these next three are, Michelle found these, I think, when we were like, going through, trying to do some town report stuff, and we're like, well, who's this? So in the, you know, as I said, in the world of who knew, here we are.
What does the parking clerk actually do?
I have no idea. I wish I could answer that. But we really don't, could be able to find.
There's a national law, I had to look.
Yeah, it's under national law, and I don't know specifically what.
I'm just curious.
She doesn't go out and issue tickets, I could tell you.
I understand.
And she doesn't get anything for it, it's just, I'll find out just out of curiosity, we have to look through these, you know, I'm curious what the fence viewer does.
Yeah, me too.
That was my next question.
Yeah, that's explained someplace.
Yeah, there's somewhere.
But I can't remember.
Well, we stumbled on these, we're like, you know what, we better at least make sure they're codified, and then we'll sort of go through and make sure whatever we're supposed to be doing, we're doing.
Have they been in the past? These people all were.
Yeah, no, because I remember Barbara with the parking clerk.
Yep, and Heather probably has not since she's been here.
I, well.
She probably knows she had to do anything.
Yeah, I don't know.
Right, but I don't think when she came on board, we renewed the.
Was she on last year? I don't know.
Heather was here last year, she came on me.
Yeah, I think she was on, but I don't know if she was.
But I don't think we ever appointed a fence viewer since I've been here.
No.
Yeah, I wasn't familiar with that.
I did speak with her about it, and she said she should be.
She should be, right, but.
Because it says here, a reappointment, so I'm assuming she was appointed.
Yes, she, I.
Or was just the position was appointed? Okay.
If the board doesn't mind, I was gonna loop the three together. So I will make a motion on approving the consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Barbara Barry, Finance Director, as parking clerk for a term to expire February 20, 2027. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Heather Blakely, DPW Director, as fence viewer for a term to expire February 20, 2025. In consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Anthony Crane, Tree Warden, as moth inspector for a term to expire February 20, 2026.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
And I assure you, I will find out what these people do, what these positions do. I know what the people do.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, just out of curiosity at this point.
Last up, we have consideration and possible action for the board to sign the warrant for presidential preference primaries.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Now on to old business.
Before we jump to that, Robin, looking through this beta pavement management service, on the last page, it does say fee proposal.
Yeah, okay.
$32,500. But Heather said there was no cost, and there wasn't any cost in our motion.
No, there's a cost to that. There was no cost on the Westville Lake Project. Yeah, she was talking about the easement when she said there's no cost.
Yeah, but did we?
But the beta contract is the fee that's on the contract.
Yeah, but did we put that in the motion?
No.
No, I think you just voted to approve the contract.
Well, it's part of the contract, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was Westville that had no fee.
Yeah, no, but I knew they were two.
Yes.
It was a $31,500.
That was for, yeah, that's the Collins Center.
And then a $32,500.
Yep, and that's data.
Do we have to amend the motion, or are you? We're okay?
Oh, no.
The money's in the contract.
Money's in the contract.
Yeah, as long as it's a document that has the dollar.
But good for the people at home to hear.
I shouldn't read so much.
No, it's good, you do.
Especially after I pick it up off the floor.
Oops.
No, I just dropped it.
Oh, God. That's a lot of pages.
I talked to Michelle. Yeah, I talked to Michelle.
Stapling is good.
Listen, I told her that was a bad day, that copier did not work.
Yeah, she was fighting with the machine all through Friday.
I was here an hour later trying to get them.
Yeah, she was playing with the copier machine.
Old business. Mary, do you have any old?
This, Mary, any movement one way or the other on the antenna or on the water tank for skill?
Yeah, so the only thing that's going on now is I drafted license language, and I sent it to them, in fact, today as a draft to the company, reminding them that it is only a draft, and it would still eventually go into require approval of the board, even if we agreed to terms of the numbers involved. They still are aware that they have to do that one other test from that woman's location. And then, once they agree that there are terms that we all could potentially agree on, then they'll go forward in their planning process, but they don't want to invest the money with their attorneys, and we're not if, we're not even gonna come close on a number for rental space. So I went based on, it was very hard to find comparable rental numbers, I don't want to discuss it too much because it's still in negotiations. I based it on what we were charging at T-Mobile, but considering that that was a 20-year-old agreement, and what reasonably, I would believe, that should escalate to monthly now, if we were going to put it forward. But I did remind them that it's only a draft, it will go back in front of the board for final approval, but at least if they're comfortable with the numbers, they can start moving forward on the other end.
Thank you. That's it.
I only had one thing, and this is no rush at all, but I remember Mary asked for all what our free cash was for a number of years, and you had given it.
Yes.
It was pretty thorough, that was great. And I thought we were gonna also do the reserve fund. I had wanted to know what kind of money we've had in the reserve fund, because they're two different.
Each reserve fund, what, stabilizations or?
No, we always had a reserve fund of money in addition to free cash in the past. And then, of course, we do have individual stabilization funds for like, the ambulance and that type of thing. But I thought that we also, we had free cash component and a reserve fund that.
Well, money gets moved out of free cash into reserves.
Yeah, but I, maybe we don't do it that way, I thought there was money in both. I just, if there's not.
I'll talk to Barbara and see, I know what you're looking for.
There's not, but.
Okay, let me check with Barbara and see what.
It was always, my understanding was always that there were two levels of reserve fund.
Well, if we just at town meeting voted to transfer into reserve funds, for example.
Yeah, but I could be wrong, but.
Yeah, let me find, I could talk to Barbara, see if maybe I can outline things better. Okay.
I thought we kept money in both.
No.
No.
The sign in the islands, how's that making out on the?
It should be coming along. Unfortunately, our sign gentleman had an unfortunate fall.
Accident.
In front of the COB, he fell and broke his hip.
Oh, geez.
He had a hip replacement prior that.
He fell on.
Right, walking down toward the graveyard. He was taken, it appears he may have taken a walk down toward the graveyard and.
It's too bad. Did he slip on?
I don't know the situation, but unfortunately, I think that slowed things down a little bit, plus weather came in at the same time. But it's still, it is still on board, and we're still, he's still been in touch, he's, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
He's not out of touch, just in a little recovery mode.
And I'm just curious if the board would be amenable of Michelle and Robin typing something up to this Officer Kingman with his life-saving, we could sign it and give it as a.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, you could sign a letter from, you draft a letter on behalf of the board.
Yeah.
You all just sign, sure.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, it's pretty neat.
Okay, great, yeah, and we can tackle that next meeting, maybe.
Yeah, that's very cool.
All right. Okay, I have no other old, new business. Any new?
I have none.
No.
No, okay, hearing none.